Good evening. We're welcoming you off to the Board of Education's 12th and 2013. I'd like to just recall that Marty is not with us. Marty has sent us a letter resigning from the Board of Ed for several reasons. It's really important to Marty, she was one time in service on the Board. Does she wish her well? Does she all right?
Physically all right?
Physically, yes.
All right. Tony?
Here.
Alan?
Yes.
Frank?
Here.
Greg?
Here.
Larry?
Yes.
Michelle?
Here.
Emily?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Michael?
Here.
Okay. Thank you. Next items to consider agenda? Anybody who can use anything from the considered agenda? Hearing none, it's passed. The Chair, I'll have my report tonight, I'll just move on. Superintendent's report?
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Just there was some correspondence, policy met tonight, and we have put in for K to review our policies, our Board of Education policies. They will do that in July, and we will get a report on which ones need to be revised, et cetera. So we'll be working on that. So that's something in your packet. Long-range plan update. Glad to see so many people here tonight. Hopefully more are coming. This is a meeting not only for the Board of Education, but we have SLAM Architectural Firm in Castle Booze, which Don will introduce in a little while to go over some of the plans for the options that we are researching. We have retirement. Just so you know, Virginia Segagas, the Spanish teacher, will be retiring June 30th, and she is at Washington Primary. She's a fabulous educator. She has wonderful, wonderful enthusiasm. But what is so great about her retirement is she's still young and passionate enough to go out in the world and enjoy herself. So we wish her well and hope she has a great, great time out there. It's not on here, but I wanted to let you know that on Wednesday, the Public Utility Regulation Authority gave our district, our region, a grant for $127,000 to fund a video production pathway, which will include a TV studio and technology, editing. We're very, very, very excited about it. Karen Files wrote, there she is back there, wrote the grant, and will get that program up and going. And it is a wonderful program for students who are interested in technology and production and computers and things in front of the camera and behind the camera. So we are really very, very excited, and it's going to be a wonderful way to communicate to everyone out there who gets a charter of communication. So we're very, very happy about that. So congratulations to Karen and the region. I think that it's wonderful news.
I'm at my own side.
Yeah, I agree. And that's it right now. We have a couple other things, but I don't-
You want to move on to item five?
We can go on to item five. We'll have Don come up. Don, do you want to introduce?
I'm Donald Leary, Facilities Director for the district here. We've invited two architectural firms. The first will be Castle Booze. This is Charles Booze of Castle Booze and Associates. He's here to discuss option two A, renovate Chapag so that all students can attend in a current school building. And option three, keep Burnham six to five, or K through five, and renovate Chapag for everyone else pre-K through 12. So Charles is going to walk us through a concept that he developed, and I'll let him take it from here.
Thank you. Pleased to be here. Good evening. Castle Booze was charged with studying the existing building to purposes of determining the ways and means to incorporate culturally sized new high school program into the building, as well as incorporating a new K-5 elementary school that would consolidate all of the elementary school students from Roxbury, Bridgewater, and Washington into one building, and to preserve the existing core facilities in this building, which are certainly a significant community asset. Secondly, the charge included the determination of how this project could be approached, because it's a fully occupied educational facility, while all this construction is going on. We think we've accomplished that rather well, based on the experience on numerous other projects. And of course, last but not least, what does all this cost in real dollars? It's difficult to determine exactly how to budget the project. So we had to pick a date, and assuming that the whole project would go with a bid date of April of 2015, that is what our budget price is based upon. Over the past five or six years, the construction industry, as far as building cost is concerned, has trended rather on a flat basis, and the industry, from what we hear, feels that this is a bit of a pent-up situation where the prices are bound to start to escalate sometime in the future. When that happens, I think we'll be determined by the state of the economy. But it's something that you have to be concerned about if the project is going to drift off for five or six years. The numbers that you have today may not be valid, and they have to be revisited on a periodic basis. Perhaps the program also may, if five or six years go by, may also want to be revisited. But in concept, we think we've accomplished what we were charged with. All of these graphics are in your packet, your handout, so that you can refer to them if it's difficult to see up here. But I've included an aerial of the existing facility, an aerial of a proposed new facility, and a floor plan. This is the main floor plan, and this floor plan up here is the second floor of the new section of the building, new section of the building. We'll start with the middle high school. The program for the middle high school is essentially based on the numbers that are to be expected, and working with staff, we've established the various classroom accounts. The concept is to create a new academic block for the middle high school. The middle high school, the middle school on a first deck and the high school on a second. That can be done right here. And please note that we've separated the existing building and the new by about 60 or 70 feet. We want to bring light and air into the new building as well as the old. And also, we want to be able to construct the new academic wing. New academic wing for the middle high school while classes are still in session. So the addition would be constructed here while this building remains in use. There are renovations associated with making the high school work, and that would be a new administrative area, a new media center. An existing music area would be completely renovated for music and theater. We have an art facility. And right off the existing community entrance, we have 4,500 square feet reserved for district administration. That's located right here. So the auditorium would be renovated to be updated for code and last for another 20 years at least, as far as all the systems are concerned. Existing gymnasium would be renovated. The pool would be renovated, and the locker rooms associated with both those facilities would also be upgraded. A lot of code work has to go on in the locker facilities. And the way locker rooms are used, in our experience today, are different than what they were used, how they were used 20, 30 years ago. The cafeteria for this building will remain intact. The kitchen, which is below, and the mechanical system, which is below, will also remain intact, but they will be renovated, because all the systems in the building will be upgraded or renovate as new status. This work in support of the new academic block can be done during vacation periods, of course, but also because the population of the building is abbreviated compared to what it once was, we also can work during the school year on selective areas. So we feel that by the time this portion of the building is complete, the renovations associated with the operation of the middle high school will also be completed in a timely manner. That'll probably consume about 16 to 18 months, at least two summer periods, and we want to scale the bid time to match that schedule. Generally, you need two summers. After the middle high school, the new section of the middle high school is complete, we can move students and staff over. And now we have this entire section of the building that we're in right now, the academic portion of the building, that is just south of the main public circulation car. We are redesignating this entrance as the community entrance. And the new high school entrance is right here, and that, of course, would meet all security standards that are being applied to school facilities today and are being invented as we speak. There's a lot of different ideas about what the security is going to be all about, but we certainly have included that in the budget for all this building. So we've moved the students and staff into the new facility, and this area of the building can now be demolished. All of the hazmat materials, et cetera, associated with the entire existing building, during renovations, of course, they would be removed before the renovations are done, but once we have this area open and available, it's a bit less money to remove that material before the demolition process is completed. With that building removed, we now have the new site for the proposed K-5 facility, which attaches itself immediately to that corridor or lobby, if you will, on the south side of what's left of the original building. Original building is shown in green. This area of the building also has some community use potential. We have a new oversized gymnasium included in the elementary school, because there's always tremendous amount of demand for gymnasium space. Also, there's a multi-purpose room here with a servery, so that the existing kitchen can charge this as a servery, and the elementary school children can eat in the elementary school. There is really no need for the elementary school children to interact at all with middle high school functions, except when staff wants to escort them to, for instance, the auditorium for assembly, et cetera, productions. But that's really the only reason. And there would be no way to access the new elementary school from the community or the existing huge area, any existing building, during the day or really any other time, unless specifically admitted by staff. And that would be this controlled entrance at this point. Other than that, there's no need to have any interaction between the two facilities. We have a new elementary school entrance right here, and that is our security entrance again, controlled by administration. And this block, which drifts around a delightful courtyard here, we have the two classrooms per grade, PK, K through five. We have an art room, a music room, a computer room, a media center, and media center support, special ed, et cetera. Rounds out the program for the elementary school. The elementary school also has a dedicated play area and a field to the south of the existing building. And as far as site work for, supporting site work for this building, I'll stick with the elementary school first. The existing plaza, promenade, if you will, where the buses drop off the children, that would be extended further south, not too far, so we're in trouble with the photography, but we want to be able to have buses that can stack for the elementary school further on down, and where parents can drop off, they can come up and then cut through the parking lot and exit without interfering with the buses at all. We feel that this is an important feature. And we have new handicap parking for the elementary school. Likewise, the road work has been modified, going further north here, not a lot, but some, to accommodate the new entrance for the high school, which has a larger stacking area for the buses. Parents drop off can enter the parking lot at this point and also go back out without interfering. Now, parent drop off can also be accomplished toward the rear of the existing academic block. Coming in here, having a loop road here, dropping off the children right at that spot, and going back out. Existing parking has been increased by about 35 cars in front of the building, and this lot essentially remains intact, but that also has potential for expansion should that Now we get to the question about, well, how much is all this going to cost?
By the way, I need a defibrillator back here, because I jumped ahead.
You jumped ahead, right. Well, the, I've been doing this for a lot of years, long to 45 going on 50, and I learned by that whole experience that, you know, the first number that goes on the street is the only number that anyone's going to remember. There's a lot of unknowns associated with the renovation of this facility, and that basically breaks down to the State Department of Education's formula for reimbursement. Whereas you have far too many square feet in the finished facility to qualify for that reimbursement, you're significantly over. So the only way that you can bring your reimbursement in the line, 31 percent thereabouts, is to either obtain special legislation so that the area penalty is forgiven, or you choose not to. There are other ways of approaching the renovation of that, of the existing building, to try to make the reimbursement numbers work to your advantage. From one extreme, special legislation, the other extreme, maybe not seeking any reimbursement at all for the high school portion of the building. But that's to be determined, because it really is a matter of how the region wants to code this particular project. If you'll note, in the cost section, we have a renovate, the new construction of about 100,000 square feet, and renovation of about 95,000, 96,000 square feet. And your state reimbursement is 33 percent. We have site costs, building construction for the middle high school. They're reasonable numbers when you look at them by themselves. We have the building renovations are $19 million, and the escalation and CM fees and allowances for hazmat removal, and all that stuff, all those soft costs, amount to about 33 percent of the total project cost, because of the unknown of when is this project going to be bid, and exactly what, how the programs are going to shake out when you all determine what that's going to be. So we thought it would be best to allow for that at this point in time, and as bad as the number may look, if you look at it very carefully, you're going to see that the pieces and parts do make sense. So we're, in building construction and contingency, et cetera, you're at about 76, and then you have owner's soft costs, which are going to include FF and E, and testing, and inspections, and fees, and all that stuff, and that adds another $11,700,000. That also would include your bonding costs, depending on how the bond situation shakes out. You can see in the bottom part of the presentation, the penalty, it's about an 84,000 square foot penalty, which is significant, and that's what's really affecting your reimbursement cost. So it's down significantly from basically a third, which would be $30 million, it's down about 15. But special legislation has erased area penalty in other cities, towns, and regions. So precedent is there if you choose, your representatives, the Senator chooses to help you with that.
So your estimated cost to Region 12 is $72,994,000?
That is correct. Now, I think a big part, certainly a big part of why that number is a shock, is the fact that you have such a huge community asset, and your core facilities are presently existing in this building. It would be very difficult to justify replicated. A new gymnasium probably would not be of that size to your population. A new auditorium, you probably couldn't afford an auditorium at all. Generally, what happens in schools that have small populations is you wind up combining a cafeteria with a meeting space that really doesn't qualify as an auditorium, but people can gather there. And the cafeteria is, of course, a necessity, but that, again, because of your population, is going to be difficult to accomplish separate facilities in a new building. And of course, the pool is a significant expense, needs to be renovated, and they're expensive assets to have, but we understand that the communities use that particular facility year on. So you're really dealing with an asset that should be preserved if you find it affordable. All right? Then I will take questions.
Just doing the calendar math here. Bid date is April 2015. So 24 months occupancy is probably the 2017, 18 year?
It would be likely 17, or probably would be complete for September 17.
Right, for the 17, 18.
For the high school, middle school?
High school, middle school, right, because the other one would have to trail by another 18 months at least.
Wait, so the elementary school would be 18 months after that?
Yes, because you see, we have to maintain the existing building in place.
Oh, right, right.
Until we put that, so you're not going to be able to tear this down until your new middle high school is, so you got, you know-
Oh, I thought it was going to be, all right, so that wouldn't happen before that then?
No.
I thought 24 months was final occupancy.
No.
It's not, it's first occupancy.
First occupancy for middle high school, second occupancy would be another 24.
So elementary is like 2019?
Now, this is a dumb, non-familiar question, but when you have a bid date of April, that doesn't in any way allow you to begin any kind of construction that summer?
Oh, no, no. You wouldn't want to begin until the first summer.
Well, no, but the first summer is June of 15.
And one caveat on the bid, that would be for the middle high school. You would not bid the elementary school two years in advance. You would bid that later. So, you know, you're putting-
But what I'm saying is if the bid goes out in April 15, then there's no way, for the middle high school, there's no way construction would begin that summer, which is three months away from April.
Oh, no, bid's received by April 15.
Received.
Yeah.
So you could start construction in, which would give you a total of three summers, but you still don't think you could do both pieces over three summers?
Oh, no, you couldn't, you could not, you could not. And one other, just to finish up on this, John, there is no need to worry about the elementary school, because when that gets completed, then consolidation begins elsewhere. There's no need to worry about summer, summer work for that government.
So that would be, that could be done during the year then?
Yes. After it's abandoned.
My last question is, just to be clear, when you get to net eligible value, 46 million, that's what you were saying it would be if there were kind of a legislative change? Is that right?
Yes.
So then barring-
Well, I want to be clear. You would, if there was legislative change, you would wind up adding about $15 million to your reimbursement, because you're only entitled to 33.
Right.
And if you got 88, so you would be entitled to about 29.
So, but in other words, what you're saying is the net eligible value is where it would be, but with the law as it is now, you have to add 15 back to that, which gets it up to the 72.
As it is now.
Okay.
Well, I must have fallen down a rabbit hole, because I'm in total shock. You have done a lot of great work, I appreciate it, goes without saying, but why would we want to expand the space when we have a capacity under this roof of about, as I recall, 1,500 children? And our population now is 800, going down to 750 in the next academic year, dipping down to 500, yet we're expanding the space instead of reconfiguring what we have here? Granted, we have to do some, excuse me, some work in the building, but I don't know why the scope of work has to be so mammoth, number one, when we have a space here that could be reconfigured under the roof, keep the pool, keep everything, you know, the public spaces where they are, just remaster what we have here for our very dwindling population. And also, as a result, of course, then we do have real issues. I mean, I don't see legislative action helping us here, you know. The state's not going to worry about us, and I doubt if we're going to get some of that grant money. But I just don't understand where the scope of work was determined to expand.
This is an option. This is one option. We're studying to be costed out. This is not the option.
Well, but this option, as presented right now, would appear in my book to put a big nail in the option of the consolidation up here, because 76 million dollars is 76 million dollars.
Well, I could just give you a little insight, just a little bit.
Yeah, you, no question.
One of the issues that we're dealing with, with the community, is that they really want to see two separate schools. They want it to be very clear, delineated, that this is the pre-K to 5, this is 612. The other piece with this option, and this is where the costs are coming in, is that that whole green middle piece is not reimbursable.
Yeah.
Okay? And so the other piece we're dealing with is, does the community want to keep that pool? Do they want to keep that auditorium? And I think when you hear the next presentation, and I haven't heard any of this prior, so I don't know what that cost is going to be. I mean, without that middle piece, this drops dramatically.
But it's still an all, why can't we live within the wall?
Well, I'd like to answer that question, because it's a good question, and it's probably a question on a lot of people's minds. And I think the answer is, number one, do you want, that's going to cost a substantial amount of money, not much less than this. And you now have a building where all of the children are basically congregated in one area, K through 12, in one academic area, that is, excuse me- one area, K through twelve, in one academic area, that is, excuse the expression, barn-like, and will be very difficult for you to get, you know, reimbursement, which you say you don't believe you're going to get reimbursement, but you will. But the reimbursement has to include at least updating the building to a lead silver standard, which is light and air and all the good things about what a building really should be. We should have windows, we should have the ability to look outside, is especially important. Well, I think it's important for all the ages, but especially important for the primary age. And unless there's a distinct separation, secure separation between the primary students and the middle, high school students, I don't think you have a project that's going to be at all interesting or approvalable to your taxpayers.
Can I just continue and ask two more questions? So you did bring up, now the state is only, I might have misunderstood you, reimbursing silver lead status?
That's correct. Well, you have to build it to that, you don't have to be certified, you have to build it to that standard.
Okay, and that works, that's also for renovation?
Absolutely.
So anything we do here has to be lead silver?
Not certified, but yes, standard.
To get reimbursed?
That's correct. And the building has to be sprinkled, fully.
And the other thing is, when you're expanding the space so dramatically, or as I understand, anytime you're going to touch the building that exists and add population, don't we have to do a DEP study of our septic?
That's a separate issue, that was beyond our study, I think Mr. O'Leary will explain that.
But that's...
Yes, it's my understanding that you will need new septic fields, probably new water source, et cetera, but it's not part of the study, and it's not part of the estimate, by the way.
Okay.
Just to follow up on Sanderson's question, could you give me the maximum student occupancy then for the elementary wing and for the middle, school, high school wing?
Well, the elementary wing would be based about, I believe it's two forty-one, is the healthy there? And we're dealing with something in a neighborhood of five something in the middle, high school.
Five.
I could look it up.
Greg?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. The first one is, you say that there have been a number of other districts that have had success in obtaining special legislation?
Correct.
Because I know that Connecticut passes special acts all the time. It really seems to be a factor, not so much of the merits as about how good your lobbyists are, but it does happen, I know routinely. But the other question I have for you here is on this contingency, this escalation fee, and also the interplay of that and the reimbursement. If your reimbursement were increased to the maximum, and if your contingency fee did not go out to the extent it would be, those would all be reductions of the basic fee on the bottom, be off the bottom line.
Absolutely.
So if you were able to get the extra fifteen million dollars, you're down to fifty-eight. If you were able to cut your contingency from twenty-five million to, say, fifteen million, you'd be down to forty-eight. The idea would be this is bottom-line stuff, so I'm glad I'm correct on that. And the next question is, you talk about a bid date of April 2015, or twenty-four months out. Assuming this project were to be approved at a referendum in 2013, is there a reason why it would take two years to have bid documents drawn?
We frankly thought that you would be looking to, you would not be able to have your funds approved prior to June 30th of 2013. So we assumed that it would be 2014.
Well, I don't think you're going to have funds approved.
Well, you have to have funds approved before you can apply. You can't, you just can't apply and say, well, we want a project. You have to have your funds in place, and then you can apply to the State Department of Education for a project.
Remember that.
Does that mean a vote?
Yes, going back to the septic question, have you calculated the septic load for the new construction?
I don't have anything to do with the septic, sir. Maybe Mr. O'Leary can help you.
So, but in your, you have a site plan there?
Correct.
So if you have, and you know you need a septic?
Yes.
And you know that it's going to be a great load, a substantial load that has to be put somewhere?
That's correct.
You've made no allocations for that in your site plan?
I was told it is not part of this study, and do not make any application, do not show it, do not speculate on it, do not try to budget it, it's being engineered by others.
All right, okay, so it makes, it will make a huge, a substantial difference in that bottom line.
Okay.
Thank you.
We've had some septic conversations in the past, because we've gone through different ramifications of building on this land here. And as I recall, one of the main, I think it was secondary septic field that we now have gotten rid of, that choice was under the track. So we might have to tear up the track, because also the, between the wetland situation, the slopes, the CLNP easement, all of that's going to be very complicated to house even on all of this land.
I'd love to be able to help you, but I know nothing about that, we weren't told to include it in our study.
Okay.
Yeah, if Mr. O'Leary can shed some light on this now...
I'm sure they have a plan, we're going to get another report.
As long as we hear it, that's all.
I have two questions. One, and Greg touched on this, but from projects we've done before, thirty-three percent seems really high for contingency and escalation. I think in the past, they've been in the teens or twenties, so I know you said...
It's a combination of a lot of things. Combination of CM fees, it's a combination of contingency, not only design contingency, but construction contingency. This is a placeholder only.
Okay, well, that was what I wanted to ask, you know, what kinds of things would we need to get in place in order to reduce the contingency? You know, I guess the financing, once we find out, once it goes to bid, we would know what the...
Financing is down in soft costs, but things like...
Oh, the escalation, okay.
Things like the potential escalation, how long is this going to be before, if this doesn't happen for ten years, you know, you don't want a budget number that's sixty million, and it's going to wind up costing ninety million.
All right. All right, my other question was about the renovations to the existing space. As we, you know, I don't know, we have to hear the other presentations, and we're going to have to take a look at all of this, but I have a feeling we're going to get questions, we're going to want to take a look at that nineteen million dollars. Some of that, you said, was renovate to new?
It's renovate to new, yes.
All of it?
All of it.
And is that, we're not getting reimbursed for that existing space?
Well, if you, you're not, and that's where the special legislation comes in, because of the area penalty, you'll never be able to make up the fact that the building is substantially oversized, and the only way you can start to creep a lot closer to a standard reimbursement situation would be to probably build two new buildings, because I don't see a lot of support in carrying out existing facilities that, you'd have to pick and choose. Now, would you get rid of the auditorium in the middle of the building? You can't get rid of the gymnasium. You know, it's a, it's a, you have a community asset here, and I think the success of this approach could be gauged primarily by how much community support do you have to maintain what's here?
Right. Well, I guess what I wanted to ask is, would it be possible, I don't know how much detail you have behind that nineteen million, I'm sure much of that is stuff that has to be done. We know from the study that you did before, there are mechanical issues, roof issues, all sorts of issues with that existing space. But if we wanted to try to lower the number and choose not to, I mean, I don't know, when you say renovate to new in the auditorium, does that mean you ripped out all the seats? Well, if we chose to live with those seats, you know, do you have that much detail, or is it not?
Where this particular situation becomes complicated, as you can, I can tell by your question, I mean, it is complicated to people, is that the state is interested in doing projects that are going to last for the next twenty years, so you're not knocking on their door again, or at least a couple decades.
But we aren't getting...
And generally do a study...
But we aren't getting reimbursed for much of that.
This could be a very supportive study for SLAM's presentation, and that is, you have to study what the cost is of renovating the existing building as opposed to building new. And as you can tell, in our estimate, with contingencies, et cetera, are shocking to you, but we think they are very real.
Could I just clarify, I see a little confusion between what she's asking, what you're saying is, she's saying, and this is just because I think we've both experienced in the past, having gone through this a few years ago, the distinction between renovating to new, renovating the code, fixing things up to a certain degree. And from what I recall, and what I think Michelle's saying, is that in the past, in order to get state reimbursement, you must renovate to new, because as you said, you need to have twenty-year life to the...
You must renovate to new if you want to be reimbursed for the cost of upgrading your systems. When it comes to the code work that's involved in that area, you are reimbursed for code work, you're not reimbursed for deferred maintenance. So you would be paying, you could pay on your own, all the deferred maintenance in that area, but you would not be renovating as new. To renovate as new, it becomes much more attractive as the reimbursement rate ratchets up.
Right. So in other words, what you were saying before is, we have a problem already with the, with the size of the building?
Yes.
And if we were to get any kind of special dispensation, we would have a greater chance of getting that special dispensation if we renovated to new in that middle area?
Well, one of the biggest penalties that you're suffering is just because area.
Size, right.
Okay. Now, if you renovate as new and get that dispensation for the area, now you're being reimbursed at least a third for all your deferred maintenance, so you're a third ahead. You will not get reimbursed for deferred maintenance unless it's a renovate project.
So how much, is there a savings if we didn't renovate to new, just did deferred maintenance?
There would be to some extent, and the fight between Region Twelve and Bureau of School Facilities is going to be, well, what about the direct support facilities? Could a conversation be had? Could negotiations be successful? I would say yes, but you have to cross that bridge when it's time, when you get there. We're not there yet.
But what you're saying though is, that risk and the loss of the fulfillment of one of those goals could save us money in the outlay towards not renovating to new, but probably not enough to make up for the fact we'd be losing reimbursement most likely?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Just a quick question, excuse my ignorance, but what is a CMV?
Well, a project like this is managed by a construction manager.
That's all.
And it would be up to you what sort of system that is, CM at risk or CM administered.
Just a suggestion to both you and SLAM, anything with initials that don't scream automatic, understandable, it's nothing.
And I'm not understanding in your narrative here, the elementary school children will be housed where can this start?
They're in their existing school building.
Okay, just want to make sure that we were not, because the way I'm reading that you're housing, I guess it's just the middle, high school academic block to the north of the existing building. So the only people that would be affected here, not only, it's the majority of the children, would be the middle, high school kids here.
That's correct.
The current situation would not be disrupted, though. This would be built on the side.
Right, exactly. Project goes forward without major disruption to the education of the middle, high school during the eighteen months of construction. And not only that, but the amount of site disturbance with this approach is minimal compared to whatever you do with two new facilities, and then what do you do with this building?
The other piece that's positive about this is that if you were to say that the elementary school wouldn't open until 2019, for example, you would be able to say to the towns, if this happened, you know, the current incoming kindergarten class would be the last class that would graduate from those schools and finish their time there, and they would know, they'd have a long time to maybe work on a repurposing of current buildings. So it does have a nice transition to it, just as an aside.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Tiger, just for you.
I just have a question. You've basically combined secondary and primary education in one complex. Is there any other school district in the state that's currently doing this that we could draw some conclusions from, or a history from of how that works?
I'm going to use your word in the same complex. We just finished K-12, this complex in Griswold, Connecticut. It's on the same campus, close by, and you can certainly go look at it, they'd be happy to show you what it's all about.
Okay, thank you.
Peter?
Question for the board, for both architects, were they given...
I'm not accepting questions for the board. Do you have a question for the architect?
Okay. Were you given a set of ed specs to work on?
Essentially, yes, we worked with, we worked with a program for the elementary school and a space needs program for the middle school. And that generally qualifies as what the architect needs in a way of ed spec.
But not an ed spec?
Not formally.
I understand the difference, but not an ed spec?
Not an educational specification that would be crafted and submitted along to the state for reimbursement as justification. There's a lot of educational philosophy in ed specs that do not necessarily relate to the building's per se.
Right. Now, and you also give the direction to create a proposal in anticipation of getting state funding? Is that one of the basic requirements? I haven't seen your RFP, so I really don't know where your start point was.
All right, is there anything else?
No, no.
All right. I'm going to cut it off there. Thank you very much, wires.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Does this wish is on the project?
Thank you. Can we keep these?
You can keep those, but can I add my easels?
I think, did you bring easels?
I did.
Okay, yes, you can take easels. Two seconds.
I do very much.
It's five hundred thousand dollars, the best we know at the moment. We've been talking to Holland Hughes, and for thirty-nine hundred dollars, we can start doing soil testing and things around here to identify a closer number.
Five hundred thousand dollars in one area, and that's, that's with the increases in the building?
Correct. That would take us from seven thousand gallons a day to fourteen thousand.
All right, so the other question I was going to ask, you were talking to me about this, is the parking.
I didn't want to leave the hole in the program, I didn't want to leave the hole.
Okay, and the other question I have is in the parking. You're adding all the additional building, where were thirty-five additional parking spaces for all that new building, for all the elementary building up here, or do you think that's realistic?
I didn't...
Okay. The first approach to this project was, is a bit of a continuation from an earlier study that we did back in 2006 for the district, when we did a regional consolidation of the elementary schools, we did a master plan, and we looked at a consolidated K through five facility on this campus back then. Part of our charge was to update the space program to represent the current projections. We used the 2016-17 projection year, because that was the highest enrollment projection in the eight years from there to the end of the projections. So we used those figures. We also used some of the site diagrams that we developed back in '06 to facilitate the K through five study, and then we developed a new site diagram to facilitate the K through 12 study. I'll look at things in a little bit more detail, but I want to make the point that these are diagrammatic and they're not worked out plans, but they show that it's a feasible development that could take place on the site. While we're close to the topic of septic systems, I'll just add that both of our opinions of cost include that $500,000 allowance, the owner provided allowance for the septic development, to be determined after we do some more percussion tests. So this is dark here, and I apologize that you probably can't see it. There are some handouts, I don't know if they got distributed. I didn't bring this many. But you have this here in your handout. This is a program comparison, and so the left-hand column is the K through five facility as we saw it back in 2006, consolidated on this site. And we put that there for contrast, just so you can see what the differences were from what we were talking about seven years ago to where we are today. The middle column is the K through five facility as projected in this study, 2013 study, for those 2016-17 projections of 288 students, K through five. And the right-hand column is the K through 12 facility, a total of 692 students, again, using the 2016-17 projections. If we look a little bit closer looking at the K through five, some of the primary differences are, as you'd expect, the classroom academic spaces significantly reduced in your current study relative to the other study. The other study was looking at 491 students, are now 288. The gymnasium and PE space has a little bit increased, because in 2006, we were looking at a middle school-sized gym to support the pre-K through five program. We're now looking at a full high school-sized gym to become a community asset, as well as support the K through five program. And that's to support the play in the community. In addition to the oversized gym, we're also, have included some changing rooms in that program as well. Now, those are the primary differences between 2005, or 2006 program and the 2013 program for K through five. The bottom line is that we have about 44,000 meters net square feet for the program space in the pre-K through five. When we gross that up, to take into consideration walls, corridors, bathrooms, and all the other, what we call a gross-up, we get to a building of about 66,900 square feet. The capacity, as I mentioned, the building is designed around 288 students. The capacity, the seat capacity for students, however, is, I believe, 592, 529, which gives us a building utilization of approximately 60% and rounding. Similarly, K through 12 program, we collaborated with Dr. Fossey on this one, and we have done some K through 12 programs in the past. Essentially, all of the K through five spaces came over to the right-hand, or the right-hand column. And then we made the adjustments for the athletics program, for the auditorium. We do have an auditorium of 300 students, to support 300 students, for five days. And I believe those are the primary changes from the program, as well as the additional classrooms.
Where would the building be on this?
So this is a site diagram for a K through five school. This is a footprint for the K through five. The main access drive would remain, we take advantage of that. And then you have some parking to the north, and a parent drop-off loop and a post-drop-off loop. You can relocate a field hockey, there's a generous area for playing, and some of that would become structured play, playground.
Point out where the current school is now.
The current school is here.
Right.
And the fire pond is here. You can relocate a softball field there, and get another multi-use field in that zone as well. Again, as I mentioned, these are diagrammatic, but they are to scale. An alternative location, basic same location on site, again, the pre-K through five school, up to the north side, with structured play area, relocation of the softball field up on the upper tier, and field hockey and practice fields, depending, you could either bus drop-off loop and a parent drop-off loop with parking. In all of the, in both of those schemes, however much of the existing parking that we would need to retain could be retained from the existing building, and in proximity to that. Pre-K through 12 scenario, again, same basic building or location on site, same basic use of the existing access drive. And the building is, the footprint of the building is about 100,000 square feet in this scenario, and its configuration, although very basic in this diagram, is consistent with separation of K through five functions on one side, and the middle on high school functions on the other side, administrative functions in the middle, and other support spaces deep in the middle, so that it can be shared as necessary, or as a new seat fit. We do have in the program separate cafeteria space for both, for K through five from the middle, middle and high. We have, so that, we have a separate cafeteria space to keep them separated. In this scheme, we have, again, a bus drop-off loop, and around the backside, a visitor and parent drop-off in the back, with visitor parking over on this edge, so that facilitates the young, primary students toward the back of the building, or on the side. Relocation of the softball field, relocation of the sports, should that be necessary. Some additional parking, and again, a multi-use field overlaid with a baseball field up on the upper tier, and again, another multipurpose field here. Any questions?
Yeah. Of the, of the pre-Ks, the pre-K through five, option one, option two, what do you believe to be the better placement? And then to follow up, when we're looking at a new pre-K 12, what do we do with, what can be placed in the existing school? What can be saved in the existing school? Or could that be playground? Where, you know, what is that other than a deep pit?
Well, our schemes do not take into consideration reuse of that building at all.
So it'd be abandoned?
It'd be demolished.
And do you have a demolition cost with it?
The demolition cost in the K through 12 scenario.
So it would be a pit?
That would be leveled.
Grassy pit.
But, but no parking is perceived to go in that spot or playing field at this point?
The comment I made earlier about whatever existing parking that may be necessary to achieve the parking count we need for a living facility could either be located in that footprint, or the existing parking could be reused, reused as much as necessary. But yes, we could, we could develop in that area.
And going back to my original question, why option one over option two? Any advantages or not?
It's really preference in my mind. It's a test of me, because this is going by seven years now, we develop those schemes. But this seems maybe more appropriate to be, to try to minimize south exposure as far as a sustainable design opportunity, so we're fully oriented building. That's one disadvantage, but this option two is one that would a large southern exposure on the building.
So two is better in terms of exposure?
No, I'd say, I'd say one is better.
One.
Yeah, a couple of questions. Can you explain the exposure issue again? You want a more southern exposure or a less southern exposure?
We want to reduce the southern exposure as much as we can.
And that, and that's, what's your concern there? You want to...
Primary, you get a lot of solar gain on the southern edge.
So you're trying to minimize the exposure to the sun? Is that the idea?
Yeah.
Wouldn't that affect air conditioning more than heating?
It would.
Is there a reason why you, you think in a climate like this, the air conditioning matters more than the heat?
Typically, a building like this, you're cooling most of the...
Cooling more than your heating?
Yes.
Wow. Next question, I guess, is, there's no reason why we couldn't, once this building were leveled, use it for athletic fields?
Correct.
So, so even though it's not shown on the plan, there's no reason you couldn't recover athletic fields in this area?
Correct.
And then the next question is, is there a reason why you could not maintain the portions of the building that constitute the auditorium and the, maybe the auditorium, the gymnasium, and the pool? Is there a reason why those facilities couldn't be retained and used as standalone facilities?
I suppose they could, if you're going to get reimbursement, as Mr. Booth told earlier, you would have to renovate those.
Yeah. Let's say you didn't get, let's say you didn't want any reimbursement. You wanted to just remove most of the building and retain...
Sure.
The portions that were, were reasonable to, in order to make those facilities function.
That's an option, but then you have to deal with kids...
And there would be some cost, because, well, there'd be some cost. You'd have to redo the building. I mean, you'd have to, you'd have to make major changes to the building, I would think, unless you were just going to literally retain everything over there.
Right. And that's not what we were charged to look at, so I don't...
No, I understand. I'm just, I'm just thinking. Okay. Thank you.
I just want to clarify that it just seems not intuitive to a layman, that when a school is used primarily in the half of the year where heating is needed, although there is overlap, obviously, in June especially, and a little bit in September, is there something that I'm not intuitive about that would cause you to be thinking of it being cooled more than heated?
You have a lot of kids and people in the building, and the heat burn from those people require, as well as the lights and other, other things, and computers in the building, tends to put it into a cooling mode most of the time.
Really? So even when it's 28 degrees outside, there's a lot of heat emanating from the electricity and the environment and the kids?
It's usually the most, maybe, I think, they use, are then operating in what we call an internal mode, internal mode, where they are bringing in cold outside air to cool.
I should have had more kids to save on my heating. Another question, though, was, and this, I know Mr. Booth has left already, but I'm just confused about, you have the best-looking contingency of what we had recently from talking about just, one of the other options, was just renovating this building, or maintaining this building, deferred maintenance, a couple of weeks ago. And then today, obviously, we just heard from Mr. Booth on his community. Yours seems far lower than theirs. In other words, your total, this is an example, on, on the pre-K school with central office, total construction cost for school building, 42 million, including pre-construction contingencies.
Right.
What, if you can pull this off the top of your head, what comes out of that that you would add to the other contingency, general conditions, escalation, and fees? So that I could see the comparison a little bit between what looks like a sixth of the total in general conditions, escalation, and fees, whereas it's about 45% of the total on, on council boozes. So in other words, you must, you must have, in the 42 million, you must have something to pull out to add to that to balance, to make it look similar.
Well, first of all, let me say that anytime you're dealing with new construction, contingencies tend to be slightly smaller, because there's less risk...
Less surprises.
Less surprises to pop up during construction. That's the first thing. The way we do contingencies is we include the estimated contingency, and we also include the design contingency in the basic construction costs, and that's why I include that above the line.
Okay.
Because the intent during the design is that that money eventually gets into bricks and mortar, so we carry it there. Then below the line, the escalation, or, excuse me, the project contingencies carried in the owner's soft costs.
Right.
And we carry another 5% there of the overall project cost. So in total, we have about 15% of contingencies in the project.
So the difference in the 15% and the 33 to 45% is mainly a factor of new construction without the surprises involved in...
I guess you could say, I mean, without getting all the details, you could say something else.
That's the name of it. It's not that you, you're being more competent than he was, or something in general.
I'd rather not answer that, but...
Sure. Fair enough.
I happen to live in a passive solar house. So just to clarify, a little bit of confusion on that point that does seem kind of intuitive. Are you estimating that this building would run the entire year, or are you estimating the placement reference based on a 100-day school year?
Particularly, look at it from a full year perspective, because it's going to be used off, off the school year by residents, and you do have to keep your building in condition at some level during summer and autumn. So you can kind of look at it from the full normal perspective.
Well...
This isn't really a question for him, but where do we shoot the fireworks off? Just as a question. Is it on the playground?
Into the old building.
One day a year?
There's a lot, there's a lot of questions.
You have, that's, there are any available.
There you go.
I haven't gotten into the numbers yet, and I can get into that in more detail. You got numbers, question?
That would be wonderful. I just have a headings question. What do you mean by, when you include cost, reimbursement rate, central office, when you include central office, what does that mean? Is that you're moving central office up to here?
Part of, part of what we were asked to do, in addition to the new pre-K through five, the new pre-K through 12 facility standalone without central office, that was, those were two scenarios we looked at. Then we also added in 4,500 square foot, net square feet of central office space within the footprint of the building for both scenarios. So we have basically four summary sheets in the final report. One is pre-K through five with central office, pre-K through five without it, and then pre-K through 12, and then without it. And the reason the two different reimbursement rates is because the state will only reimburse central office space at 50%, 50% of the reimbursement rate.
And one other question. Is there any value, if indeed, I think as Greg brought up, and Michelle, and even Alan brought up the fact that you could, this building perhaps only half or two-thirds of it would be demolished, so we can keep the public area, that is to say, the gym, the auditorium, and the pool, and make it like a community center. Is there any kind of reimbursement for doing that? Can the town seek anything like that if they make a community center?
I don't think you'd be able to do anything from this.
Just as a question, is it on the playground?
Into the old building.
One day a year?
There's a lot, there's a lot of questions.
You had, that's very, that's very available.
There you go.
I haven't gotten into the numbers yet, but I can get into that in more detail. You got numbers, question?
That would be wonderful. I just have a headings question. What do you mean by when you include cost, reimbursement rate, central office? When you include central office, what does that mean? Is that you're moving central office up to here?
Part of, part of what we were asked to do, in addition to the new pre-K to five, the new pre-K to twelve facility standalone without central office, that was, those were two scenarios we looked at. Then we also added in forty-five hundred square foot, net square feet of central office space within the footprint of the building for both scenarios. So we have basically four summary sheets in the final report. One is pre-K to five with central office, pre-K to five without it, and then pre-K to twelve with it and without it. And the reason the two different reimbursement rates is because the state will only reimburse central office space at fifty percent, fifty percent of the reimbursement rate.
And one other question, is there any value? If, if indeed, I think as Greg brought up, and Michelle, and even Alan, brought up the fact that you could, this building perhaps only half or two-thirds of it would be demolished, so we can keep the public area, that is to say, the, the gym, the auditorium, and the pool, and make it like a community center. Is there any kind of reimbursement for doing that? Can the town seek anything like that if they make a community center?
I don't think you'd be able to do anything from the school grants program for that, but there may be other grant opportunities I'm not aware of. And that, that cost would most likely be borne by the community, and then you'd have to seek that other way to reimburse them at some level.
Okay, thanks.
Do you have a bid-in date?
Yes, our, these estimates include escalation, eight percent escalation through midpoint of construction, which we identified as the end of 2015.
Midpoint of construction is end of 2015.
So this would be, would be a faster?
So it would be, this plan, the school would be online for the 2016, 2015, 16, sorry, 2016, 17.
That's what I see here, sixteen, seventeen.
I had it right the first time.
So somehow, I'm just trying to rectify this because, once again, I'm sorry to keep comparing you to this. All I have to go by is that Mr. Booth said that his bids would be in by April 15 because of, of two, I'm sorry, April of 2015.
That's about where we are too. Midpoint, for the K through five, we're a duration of eighteen months. So I'd say March 2015.
And that's when the bids are in? It's not midpoint of construction?
No, but bids are in, and then midpoint of construction is the end of 2015, so December.
And one last question. This does imply a new, smaller auditorium?
For the K through twelve scenario, I guess.
Right, and no pool?
No pools.
And no auditorium?
What would be the?
Smaller auditorium, the three hundred.
What would be the rough difference in cost if we decided to keep the pool, the auditorium, that section for end building, and therefore not have to put it into new construction?
I'd have to look at that in the morning.
You're not putting a pool in anywhere?
Something else.
I'm not putting a pool in. I know where else, we do have an auditorium.
Right. The only problem with having four facilities separate from, say, any academic facilities, then you have to transport the kids somehow across the site, and that weather and all that, you know, it takes time programmatically, I'm not sure it's going to.
There are schools that have that in the standard, so it's possible.
It's possible, certainly it's possible.
If you could just give a, I wouldn't hold you to it, but just to give us a.
Let me think about that for a moment.
Is anyone else has a question?
I'll, I'll. Question, you spoke that the demolition costs were included in this? I'm looking for it in our sheets, and I don't see it.
You don't, yeah, the summary sheets that I have out here are just summary sheets. They're not the full detail. The report that we've done and delivered to Don will be posted to the website as one of the resources, so that detail will be there. I don't have it on these boards either.
That's all.
But it is six hundred thousand dollars to demolish the building. I have the number over here.
And is it included in these numbers somewhere?
It's included in the pre-K to twelve scenario.
So you've included the septic at half a million, and now six hundred thousand already included in the pre-K high school demolition, six hundred.
Correct, and both scenarios carry two point five million in site development costs as a part of the construction.
Right. I, I guess the question I, I, if it's a six hundred thousand dollar cost of demolishing this entire building, and the other report had a demolition and environmental fee of four million dollars?
Well, that's, let me make one other statement.
That's why I'm trying to understand why, the difference.
That six hundred thousand dollars does not include hazardous material damage. We don't know the scope of that. I have no studies, I have no survey.
What is your sense of what you might, with a building these age?
I don't know. We're getting surprised all the time, quite honestly, and I don't want to put a number out there.
I mean, is it good or bad?
It depends if it's buying PCBs.
Good, bad, any of them?
Asbestos these days is relatively easy to, to estimate, but it's the PCBs, the unknown of those can really cause trouble for the front end. We don't plan. I would, on that front, I would advise that you did a survey, you know, before you finalize any progress on this, because that can really make a break in the numbers on projects. I don't know if anybody's been following the southern middle school projects, but that would be a major problem for that job.
Oh, well.
All right, well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I could explain the numbers a little bit more, but.
Oh, go ahead. I didn't mean to cut you off.
So I've got all four here, I've come back to draw all four of them because I think you have them all there, you probably have the, the most, most of the, most of the, I rolled up through, I'm going to go through the K through five scenario with the central office, because without it, it's just dropping something off. Again, two hundred eighty students can carry that forward, sixty-six thousand nine hundred square feet, which also carried forward from the program. The two eighty students is an important number, obviously, for reimbursement. We calculate through the allowable area. In part of our worksheet, calculates the allowable area for K through five scenario at a hundred and twenty-nine square foot. According to the state, gives you an allowable building area of thirty-seven thousand square feet. Everybody, I think, can all look at each other and say, that's not going to be big enough for a school. Because of all the support spaces that you need to put in, cafeteria, gym, and so forth. So because of the small enrollment, the eligible eligibility factor is about fifty, fifty percent. So that's going to impact you when it comes down to net cost to the region. Taking all considerations, we bring forward the construction costs, in this case, is nineteen point six million from our, our detail sheets again, which would be closest to the website. And we throw out central office construction costs, and right now, it's about two point three million dollars to put central office in this scenario up here on the site within the building. So I'm not sure how that plays out with the public that you're currently paying for and so forth, but that's, that's really what the number holds in our, in both scenarios, about two point three million dollar premium to put central office within the building. So we carry through, carry forward all those construction costs. There is a detailed soft cost summary that we included in the report. Again, it's not, and you're going to hand out tonight, and it will be on the website. And then that comes down to the total estimated project budget of pretty two point two million dollars to put the K through five project up here, with central office. As I mentioned, a million of fifty-eight percent eligibility for that, gives you approximately assistance from the state of about three point nine million dollars. And that's basically twenty-two point eight percent reimbursement. Now, you're going to say, why is it twenty-two point eight percent when Mr. Booth says thirty-three? Because the state has recently adjusted their reimbursement, they've got two, two brackets now. New construction is reimbursed at a ten percent reduction from renovate to, they're trying to promote renovate to new projects, because they feel that they are going to be more cost effective. So the reimbursement rate for a new construction project is twenty-two point eight percent for the district. That's the 2014 numbers that are published on the BSF website.
Could you repeat that again? They're encouraging renovate to new because they?
That's my interpretation, they're encouraging it because they think that it's, in general, it's going to be less costly. It's not always the case.
Kind of like encouraging a cycle.
Well, and part of that is fine, but that's just the total reverse of what we've been operating on with that.
And that, that came from a public act, I think, about a year and a half ago, that improved, where they, they added a second column where new projects are just in general ten percent less reimbursement rate than, than the new projects. So in this scenario, you get almost four million dollars, and for the central office, again, half of that, some of that is the reimbursement for the central office, gives you about three hundred thousand dollars, that two point three, so it's not, it's not a significant amount, but it's, so the math down below, net cost to the region for K through five on the site with central office is twenty-one dollars. And again, let's go through K through twelve, a bit quicker. Some of the advantages of the K through twelve scenario from a financial perspective, at least from an eligibility standpoint, because you have a greater enrollment, your allowable area is to increase, as far as the state can see, you should be able to build about a hundred and six thousand square foot facility. Again, it's still not enough to, to build that school for that population, but it's a lot closer than where the actual program is, so your eligibility is up. Our program came up with about a hundred and forty thousand square foot total, if you add in the central office, it's another six thousand, so the total building size is about a hundred, just under a hundred and fifty thousand square feet. So this scenario, the expectation is that that footprint is somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred to a hundred and ten thousand square feet, and then the assumption is also that some of that building is second story, so for the third or fifth grade could be up on the second story, and then the note store high school wing could have more of a stacking of that, of that building to have a second story. Bottom line is, for the sixty-three point three million dollar project cost, you get about ten million, you know, about eleven million in assistance from the state for that scenario, as opposed to only four and a half on the other scenario. And again, it's because your eligibility is up at seventy percent, because the areas are closer. So that scenario costs, our estimates would cost you about two point two million to construct a brand-new K through five facility here.
Does that lead silver?
It's going to lead silver, yes.
Certified or not?
It wouldn't be certified unless you ask us to certify it, particularly there's an administrative cost to do that, because there's a lot of paperwork that has to be submitted to the USGBC.
What's the advantage?
A plaque on the wall.
Okay.
Quite honestly, we don't see the advantage of it, because not only does our firm subscribe to sustainable design in general, but the Connecticut High Performance Building Standard is based on lead for schools, lead silver, and you're essentially doing the same thing. We still need to get certification.
There's no difference in the reimbursement as to whether it's certified or not?
It needs to be lead silver equivalent in order to be reimbursed.
But not certified?
But not certified. You only need to comply with the Connecticut State requirements.
Two, two questions. One, so if I read this correctly, what you're saying is that the net difference between the elementary school, the K five elementary school, and the K, pre-K to five elementary school, and the pre-K to twelve high schools, about a twenty million dollar difference in price, twenty, twenty-one million dollar difference in price. So for another twenty-one million, you get a, a middle high school added on, added into the bargain, and that's primarily because of the reimbursement difference.
Primarily.
All right, is there a reason, and the second question, is there a reason why you, is there anything magical about the siting on that K, pre-K twelve building? If, if we wanted to retain some part of this building in order to be able to have a pool, because the new building won't have a pool, in order to be able to have a larger theater, auditorium, because the new building will have a three hundred seat facility instead of, what is our seat? Five hundred, I think? Five or six hundred, something like that? So if we wanted a larger facility, and we wanted to do that, is there any reason why, based on what you've done, you couldn't re-site that building to make it more adaptable to?
Couple of things coming into play with that scenario. The thing is possibly built into Castle Booze's cost estimating. You've got phasing, you've got occupied building, you've got an occupied construction site, which complicates everything. And, and then you have to decide where you're going to draw the line on what you keep and what you, what you don't keep. And again, and then combine that all together with the phasing and having kids in the building at the same time, it's not as easy as, as just, as you might think. I mean, I'd like to study it, if that's an opportunity to study it, but.
All, all, well, then let me, let me ask you this question. How large is the gymnasium in, in the proposed building, the proposed pre-K to twelve? Is it sufficient to use as an assembly site for the entire school?
Yes, yes, it's a full-size high school basketball court, which is eighty-four by fifty, plus ten feet around the perimeter, so.
Bleachers.
I think it's about, I can tell you what type it is.
It's with bleachers, it has to be, you would need that.
Yeah, question is whether you have, if you have sufficient seating for one assembly area for the entire school, I think that's critical.
It's seventy-two hundred and eighty square feet, plus we've accounted for fourteen hundred and forty square feet of gymnasium bleacher seating, so there'd be some bleachers in there for spectators. So the total space is about almost ten thousand square feet.
But the, but the bleachers themselves would not seat this full school population?
Likely not, not that area.
You'd need seating on the floor.
We carry for three hundred students in the bleachers, or three hundred.
That's what they do in primary schools now.
But you can sit on the floor, exactly. And the building has to be designed to accommodate that occupancy.
There wouldn't be many reasons to have pre-K to twelve together. I mean, one of the reasons is.
I wouldn't imagine, yeah, I wouldn't imagine you would, but, okay, no, just, just curious, that's all.
Valerie?
So, and I know you can't defend Castle Booze, but I'm just curious, they have a proposed total building area, I'm just talking of course, pre-K to twelve, of a hundred and ninety-six thousand square feet versus your proposal, which is, as you said, about a hundred and fifty thousand?
That's with central office.
With the central office, which I assume that's what we would be doing. Other than the fact that they're trying to work in existing walls, what are we going to lose in our forty thousand square feet? Pool, auditorium?
My understanding is that the pool, that, that's the double G, right now you've got a double G, so we're proposing a similar, and a smaller auditorium, those are the big ones that just jump out, and there's probably other things that I don't know.
And I would be curious to see an option, I guess, four, in which we carve out what we have here for a kind of a community center, so that those losses can be offset by at least keeping what we already have, knowing there's more maintenance, but I think that'd be an interesting option.
That's, that is charged, it's charged, it's new construction, new buildings. Okay.
The abating cost after, oh, first, there must be, this building has food and this, are there any entities out there that would give us a reimbursement?
Reimbursement?
For the abatement?
It'd be, it would be a reimbursable cost, it'd be an eligible project cost for, eligible for reimbursement, if it was built into the project. Are you asking about a survey to estimate what those costs would be?
No, I'm saying, if the, if the abatement is five million, from after, or part of the demolition, is that something that we can be reimbursed for?
I believe so, because your building, and it's on the same side, I would have to check with the government more. It's, it's not a typical scenario, typically don't go, even demolish something, but people do that.
Stay close, you guys, Neil?
Are all the fields in the, in the soft cost, and are we accepting an estimation?
As I mentioned, the five hundred thousand dollar allowance for the septic is included in our numbers.
And all the fields that you show on the?
Yes.
They're included in it? Were they the soft cost?
No, I have two point five million dollars in the site construction costs.
Melanie, be in the back. Go ahead.
Would you put it online, would you get more specifics about the layouts of these buildings?
No, it was not part of our charge, it was just strictly looking at a space program, and we did a very diagrammatic site plan just to show that, you know, it's feasible, it can be done, and this is approximately what, you know.
And does it involve three separate spaces, you mean, through five, the K through twelve, as far as student areas, library?
Yes.
All of that? Yes. We will make sure that there will be, just like in the first, specific areas, they do not meet unless it is a planned activity. That's the lead right there.
I think you answered my question, but I'll ask anyway.
Peter? Oh, I'm sorry, man, I'm sorry.
Because it's not planned out, you can't, like, I know Castle Booze may specifically have corridors so that there's still middle building, and that just looks like everything in the middle, with pack no windows.
I understand what you're saying, and again, it's very diagrammatic.
So it's, it would be figured out?
It would be figured out, with another phase.
Peter?
I'm just going back to the calculation of the, of the grades, I may have misunderstood. You have one cafeteria in your plan?
Not in the pre-K through twelve, no, two separate.
Yeah, that's, I'm talking about the pre-K through twelve, is that, two separate cafeterias?
Yep. Yeah, we have a dining for pre-K through five and dining for six through twelve.
How tall is it? How big is it?
That building is, would be planned. That building is, would be planning to be two-story portions of it. You know, it'd be portions that are just tall, single-story like gymnasium and probably cafeteria spaces.
Did you say there was a shared gym, however?
There's one gym.
So there's one gym. Are there other spaces that will be shared besides the gym?
No.
Well, the pre, as far as I can recall, the cafeteria slash auditorium gymnasium is all going to be like it is currently at the elementary schools. So that's going to be a space where the elementary schools are going to have their gym, their cafeteria, just like you do now.
Yeah, the whole would be separated from six.
Yes, there'll be one major gymnasium.
But that will only be for the high school?
Right, during the day and whatever, and the middle school. But during the day, the elementary schools will use, just like they do now, their cafeteria, et cetera, for a gym and meeting area.
So in other words, just to be clear, there's a cafeteria and, and a full-size gym.
Yes.
There technically are two.
A multi-purpose.
Multi-purpose and a side gym.
All right, right now it's just a space allocation, I mean, we can define how it's used. Also?
Just real quickly, and, you know, obviously this is part of the bigger project, but at what point will the superintendent write the expects? Because some of these questions might then be said.
I don't believe the expects are going to be written until the Board of Education decides what to send to referendum.
Okay.
But I do want to say just one or two things, just for my own clarification. We don't have to take this building down right away.
No, that's the beauty of this.
Okay, so I just, I want that to be said because part of this decision does not have to include what to do with this core building and this building right away. If you want to, you know, get someone in to come and study how you just keep the pool, auditorium, gymnasium, you can do that after we've already proceeded with something else. I just don't want us to get held up on this because from someone who's been involved with three constructions, I think it's going to be expensive, I'm not sure, and Don can, I'm sure, talk about it better than I can, to just look, like, cut off a building that is connected electrically, heat-wise, water-wise, set, whatever it is, that's not my area, is going to be a big job. So it's not like, okay, we're going to take down all these walls and it's only going to cost us two million dollars. I think it's going to be expensive. And the other piece that I know, if we do it as part of this project, it's then going to fall under all of the ADAD codes. ADA, am I saying it right? ADA codes. So for example, our auditorium will need to be totally redone because we don't have a middle aisle. We probably don't have the correct pitch, and I know all this, again, from my past experiences. So I just don't want us to get this very mushy up. If we really love, love, love our pool, our auditorium, our gym, in my eyes, you're looking at Castle Booze's recommendations, maybe we can get the costs down, I think maybe the costs were high there, and we can look into some of the reimbursables, but I don't think you're going to save a lot of money by doing a new pre-K to twelve and then keeping the core of this building. I just don't think, from my experience, that that's going to be a saver of money.
Anything else?
No, that's it for me.
Well, I just wanted to add that I don't know how much it would cost to find a rough estimate on that, but I have a feeling that's going to be a question I need to answer before we move forward with, just some kind of ballpark. I don't know.
Who else?
Well, we do know it's twenty million to renovate this building.
Yeah, well.
So if we kept, if we just went with the elementary, not the K twelve, just saying.
Anything else?
But you have to add twenty million.
Instead of some cockamamie cut off a little piece of the building and leave it here, why don't we try to cost out putting a pool, an auditorium in there?
Could you do that? That's an option. I will say that reimbursement for auditoriums pools are, is not reimbursed by the state. So I mean, you know, that cost will not be eligible for reimbursement.
I just have a feeling that's a cleaner option than what people are suggesting.
Well, it's a full cost.
Pretty big. Oh, God.
Proximal.
Give you two million dollars.
Two million dollars?
Just the pool.
Is this a square?
Did he say two?
No.
It's not reimbursed, but.
No, but the effects would be, it would reduce this eligibility factor. And then the costs are not reimbursed.
Is there space to do it?
Yeah, I think so. We're not talking about large expanses.
Okay, great.
Yeah, let me ask you one other question, which is, if we were to enlarge, if, for whatever reason, we felt the auditorium were not sufficient, I, you know, obviously, we, I'm not going to even ask the question. We can cross that bridge later. But I guess when it comes to the issue of the gymnasium, you've said that we're going to a single gymnasium versus the double that we have here, and I guess the question is.
It's a big question.
We have to figure out whether or not, I've heard that our current gymnasium is oversubscribed in this building, that we don't have enough gymnasium space. Not during the day, but in the evenings for things such as the sports programs, the intermural and whatnot.
Because the middle school goes down to WPS now as it is.
Yeah, so the question is if we're going to cut the gym in half and it's not large enough now.
Anything else? We don't have to decide that.
Well, just curious about one thing.
Do you have a question?
I, you know, I don't know when we're going to get into this question, but I think it's kind of an essential of the presentation. But if we opted for a new pre-K five, not pre-K twelve, and we kept this building and all its good facilities, and we know it costs about twenty million to renovate this building, to code.
As it stands.
As it stands, to what?
It's not to renovate.
To fix, to repair.
Okay, okay, okay.
I guess we need.
Lipstick, okay.
Lipstick.
Lipstick.
Lipstick on, Kate, that's exactly what it is.
But we, in other words, totally separate from what we do. In other words, we can take our time and renovate this, perhaps after we have settled this issue and gotten into that issue. In other words, this could follow, perhaps, assuming that I know we have a fairly new roof. This, this building could stand as is for another three, four, five years before we put twenty million in.
Oh, yeah, why, what's, you understand?
I just want to clarify what I said. But Castle Booze did a capital need study, and Don can continue, for this building for approximately twenty million dollars to repair it. That's not new science labs, that's not new bathrooms, that's not new anything, that's a repair. So I don't, I just don't want people to think that twenty million dollars is going to come here and you're going to have a state-of-the-art high school. You're not. You're going to have a building that is an old building that has just been repaired. So that was, that was the point I was making. I don't want us to think that we can hold off on this. Don has the plan, it has been shared with the long-range committee, it has been shared with the Board of Education. We can continue to go on it, but I just want people to understand that because people, I believe, taxpayers would be very upset to put twenty million dollars into this building and then come and see science labs that are antiquated.
But isn't it true that we are going to begin our accreditation process in the next year, and they're going to mandate that we have appropriate modern science labs? And a number of other things, which I think you went through this process in basketball.
Of course I did.
So they will mandate that this facility be upgraded substantially, not just repaired. If, but this facility is going to stay open, to be accredited, it's going to need to change.
Can I ask Kim, is that true, Kim? Were you paying attention?
The test is coming in 2015.
But that the labs are going to have to be upgraded substantially?
That I absolutely know that we will get some heavy hits on our facility in terms of needing to be upgraded, needing to be modernized, and so on and so forth. There is no doubt in my mind that there are going to be some serious reports coming through I D S about this building.
What is that?
I would love to have a plan in my hand to say what is going to be, to help with the writing of that report, 2015.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Could we keep your posters?
Sure.
Oh, thank you very much.
Are we going to go over this?
That's a preemptive action for this case of issues.
No, that was, Castle Booze unfortunately was not prepared to go over that tonight, but Don can certainly talk about it if you'd like. Is he here?
Yeah.
If you'd like to do it tonight, yeah.
Just, yeah, those are just a few questions.
Don, can you please go, I don't know if you're prepared to do it, go over the Castle Booze capital study? Can you do that?
Or just?
Do you have a copy? Answer a few questions.
I just have a couple of questions.
No, absolutely. It's the back, it's final two, one, thirteen, it says, in the back of the board packet, right on the bottom. Yes, yes, we did.
You didn't see this?
It's in the packet, I think, right?
It was. She didn't know the copy?
It's in the packet.
Does Valerie need one?
No, Valerie has one. Does anybody need one? Don needs one.
He's got the big.
And once again, we don't have to go over these, I know about them, I just have a couple of questions.
No.
Go ahead, Bill.
Okay, well, on page nine, so, so Castle Booze did this and then basically somewhat copied their result on their plan for the renovation of the building. So give or take twenty million for this building. Page nine of fourteen, four million dollars to remove and replace asphalt and shingle roofs. Four million dollars?
Now you're asking the wrong guy.
Well, I mean, I know the roof is less, it's about ten years old. I know we have redone some, and we did the shingles, we took the EBM off, we put a new roof on. We've had some issues, I know, but basically, the life, the warranty for the roof is like twenty years. Silk Town did it, and we, no, it wasn't, it was ten years ago. I got, I got the thing, it was at least a war. But why would we have to do four million dollars worth of reworking now? And we haven't paid the two million dollar bond off yet.
The roof, as it stands right now.
Nine of fourteen.
Hold on, he's answering your question.
Probably will not last five more years.
Why?
It's degrading. The stone is degrading from the roof by shoveling up piles of it from the roof drains. I'd have to go further and have it inspected and tested to find out what.
But four million out of a twenty million dollar project is.
I did not estimate it, they, I'd have to go back and ask them what they.
But I know there have been some issues with the roof, and I keep saying we have a warranty. We went through all this, Silk Town put it up, we have a twenty to twenty-five-year warranty. Why, and the reason why I'm bringing this up is that of a twenty million dollar price tag, four million is fairly substantial amount. And I'm trying to figure out, why are we, why, why are you saying that we're going to have to replace this in a few years instead of another ten or fifteen?
Well, I'll tell you what, I have set up for next week an inspection. If you give me till next meeting, I'll give you all of the results.
Is your comment about the warranty appropriate, Chris?
There is a warranty, I do not know if it's twenty, I believe it's twenty, it's not thirty.
Yeah, I think, I think you're right with twenty.
And it was two thousand and ten, the year in which it was applied. I could only investigate.
Well, yeah.
And I have enough problems on the road to warrant such an investigation. That's why I set up a meeting to walk.
Okay, very good, anything else, Bill?
Well, it's just that, I think, in the decision-making of, along the goal three, which will then go to us, the attractiveness of maybe maintaining this building and putting fifteen million in it versus twenty or thirteen million instead of twenty-one might indeed be a factor because we're going to get a pre-K twelve building that misses so many community elements. So that's why I think this is going to be important.
Can I just, one second, just, can you just talk about the priority piece on this? Because, do you have the last, the priority, the column?
I have.
Because I think Tony has spoken about this too, a couple of times, just so everybody, just to refresh you. There are things that were done, yeah, look at this.
Zero to five?
Zero to five. So there are things that are numbered where zero, I believe, zero, one, two are things that need to be done. Those are top priorities, and then three, four, five is as we go out to the ten to twenty years. Am I correct, Tony, or is it the other way around?
It's not, you don't go out ten or twenty years.
You go out how many years?
It was seven.
Okay, so seven years, so.
Three to five, that's what it says.
Okay, so three to five years. So I just want you to know that that's how the Castle Booze gave us this report. That these are the things we should do immediately, these are the things you can do in the next one or two years, these are the things you can do in the next three to five years.
Valerie, any questions?
Well, I'd like to see this as, you know, this is, the number one's listed number two, three, four, so we can get them all the sense.
Well, it's right there, it's in the column.
I mean, I know that, but the schematics, we need to see what's right in front of us versus what might be a requirement, et cetera.
If you look through this, Valerie, what you'll see is that the zeros and ones and twos are most of the money in here, and that the fours and fives are the small items, and that's generally what it is. I mean, a couple of exceptions, generally the smaller items.
All right, anyone else? We'll break it.
Sir, during the last, one of the last meetings we had during the strategic planning, I had asked you about the roof overhangs and whether they had been fixed, and I thought you said that they had been fixed.
The man's side roof, the, was that the other end of the pool has been repaired.
So only one section, then?
That was the only section that needed repair.
Okay, but I'm looking at, you know, the roof overhangs that project longer than two feet, you've got a four hundred and thirty thousand dollar number in here. Is that looking at the whole building?
Yes, Castle Booze had estimated that, yes.
All right, we're going to have to set aside appropriate time for all of you, but we're going to have to have a discussion about this. This is going to be presented to the Board, by the committee, and the Board is going to have to make some decisions. Now that lots of treatment, I'm sure we'll have a full opportunity to debate and discuss it.
Can I, can I say something? Totally awesome. I just noticed a little bit of commentary about taxpayers and expense of all of this. And so, completely apropos of nothing, I'd just like to venture that I went to high school in a building that was built in eighteen oh one, and is still used as a, as a school. And when it was built, it had no interior plumbing or heating or electricity or bathrooms. And somehow, they're still using it as a school now. Tell her what you received.
You don't look that old.
No, the building, not me.
If that's, I can appreciate that, but I just think when, when you say to people you are putting twenty million dollars, or even if it's fifteen million dollars into a building, that there is an expectation that they think the building is going to be upgraded. And maybe that's wrong, maybe that's wrong, but I know that I would expect that. If I, if I was, if I was going to say to people, we need twenty million to fix this building, I would want to be able to say with confidence because I want to put in science labs and technology and, you know, update all the wireless and everything and the bathrooms. That's not what this money is for, and that was my only issue. I, I respect everyone, I, I respect the taxpayers, I respect the Board, it is your decision. I just want people to understand that when we say this. I just want people to understand that when we say this building, that money does not make this building a newly renovated building, okay? So that's just my point, it was not anything derogatory or anything towards anyone.
All right.
But in just a second, what Alan was saying, I think that we appreciate you reinforcing that message because I think that needs to get reinforced to the public. However, as a board, we, we could repair, but we can also look at other needed renovations as needed. We could say, for example, we would like to upgrade the pool facility. And as a community, we get community support to upgrade the pool facility for a million dollars. And I think there might be individual support for specific renovations, not repairs. I think most people would be accepting of the idea that we need to repair what we need to repair. But I think we need to look at each individual element that is really in need of renovation, perhaps separately.
Like we do with the track.
Correct.
Well, I mean, I don't, I don't want to throw any cold water on the parade, but after you put the 20 million dollars into this building, if you've been at today's facility meeting, which you would have understood, is after you do that, that is so that you can have a building where basically everything underneath the surface is crumbling and heading toward the dumper pretty fast. This is a 40-year-old building. You put in 20 million dollars and you're going to have, it really, literally is the lipstick that, that the superintendent was talking about. Because underneath the basic structure, the basic systems in this building are going to be severely deficient. And, and before you're done, you're probably likely to spend the dollars they're talking about in the Castle Booze report just on the middle high school. If, if, if you go with that, you're going to do it over time. You're not going to do it this year, you're not going to do it in five years, you may not do it in 10. But the underlying components of the building are not in very great shape. So there you go.
But, uh, well, this is a huge decision that the board has to take. The one that would choose to slip to referendum is just going to be undoubtedly, I would assume, two or three really good options that you want to pursue, but you're going to present one for referendum to the public.
That's right.
So, uh.
Makes the decision hard.
The issue of whether the public wants to close this building is up to the public. We don't know if this is reasonable or not. This is reasonable.
Well, I, I really don't appreciate the hyperbole because to say that we're tumbling underfoot, even if we put 20 million dollars in, is ridiculous. We have spent money again and again on this building as well as the elementary schools. To say that we, you know, we have to do something other than to ma- to make the place look good because we need better science labs. Why aren't those science labs in our capital expenditure plan if they're so rural? And what do we mean by that? Total and complete gutting? We can do that. If we need to do it for accreditation, it should be coming forward on the capital expenditure plan. We certainly have technology and we all know technology is not about rooms, but devices. So to say that 20 million dollars is just lipstick on a pig or that things are crumbling underfoot if we spend 20, 20 million dollars is, is hyperbole that is extremely negative and an insult to the taxpayers. I don't expect to see, you know, just the most modern facility here after 20 million dollars. I just expect to know that we have many, many, many decades more to go and that we're going to keep our, our facilities up. But I, I find all this just an insult, a total insult to taxpayers.
Well, we, we, sir, hold on. Certainly not the presentation we had tonight.
I did not say that. I'm talking about the hyperbole that just was brought forward and the fact that we have science labs that evidently are crumbling. And I would like to see that taken care of in our 1% fund if it's a matter of life.
Remember, he can make comments on what he believes. As do you, as do we all.
As do I.
All right.
In defense.
Let's move on.
Well, I, I just want to point out one thing because.
We're not deciding, we're debating the issue tonight.
I understand, I just want to point out one thing. Those words were not my words. Talk to your director of facilities, find out what the condition of this underlying building is before you decide that it's hyperbole. These were not my words, this is what was presented to our committee tonight. So just all, that's all I'm saying, is that don't, don't attack people because they bring you the truth. The taxpayers will be much more insulted if they spend 20 million dollars on this building and the building collapses under it and they've got to spend another 30 or 40 million dollars 10 years later. Please, talk about insulting the taxpayers. Tell them the truth.
270, gentle staff non-renewals pursuant to G S X and 10 dash 151.
Um, oh, I don't have it in front of me. Thank you, we have, um, some non-renewals. Should I say renewals? No. Um, and they are being non-renewed due to elimination of positions.
Is this, is this the general, in past, we didn't have issued non-renewals to everybody, just in case.
No, no.
Because of termination, yes, they should be read, I'll, I'll believe them.
Yeah, I did not, um, send out a massive non-renewal letter to all staff members. I did not do that. I, I.
Why don't you read it?
Okay, so I can read them? Okay, Claire Cavalli, that's, um, Burnham School Secretary. Uh, Mary Catherine Eddy, uh, she is an English language arts teacher at the high school. Hillary Kurtcher, Washington Primary, grade four. Cindy Kozlowski, Secretary at the high school. And Scott Snow, a social worker district wide. I'm sorry if I messed up names.
So move, please. Request is denied, turn it.
I, I, I request that we, um, not renew.
Yeah.
Do we have to?
I don't, I, it's just recognition.
If we don't hire.
I think it's good.
We don't hire, make this situation.
I think it's international.
Okay. Non-motion meeting. Yeah, this is different than the typical, excuse me, staff non-renewals that we do pursuant to, we don't know what contracts or budget is going to pass, so.
Right.
Once the budget passes, then they're going to pass.
I, yeah, I, I'm doing this because last time I put someone on and said we usually put something, you say something nice.
I will just put a record. I will, we accept the opposed non-renewals.
Yes.
Second?
Second?
Discussion, Alan.
Um, we will be performing the duties of, the only one I have to make with this is that the bridge was Cavalli.
Uh, we do not know yet. The, um, uh, secretaries union has different levels of secretaries. So there is a bumping that goes on, um, so that has not been yet determined. Next month, definitely somebody, it, it's someone internally because, um, what we've done at the high school and the middle school is we are now going to have one office, which means we only need, um, two secretaries, one office. So two of the secretaries, they're kind of like bumping each other.
Oh, so, uh, this Cavalli's position is a matter of years in, so she's.
She's low man. Yes, she's, she's, uh, has the least seniority as a secretary to the principal.
All right, so move in a second, Nancy.
I just was wondering if this was the complete list for next year?
I think it does not include paraprofessionals at this point because we have yet to, um, determine, um, the special education needs and where we're going to put people. So hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll have those people also.
I'm going to stay on the board because I don't think this is appropriate any for us to comment on. I think in the past we refused to be, um, too intrusive and now I think we're being asked to be too intrusive. So I'm going to back off. I think this is not appropriate and it depends on our position.
Okay. Move in seconds, and all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes, I'm opposed because I don't believe it's our decision.
Okay. Tell you. I don't know. Two opposed.
Well, I have an abstain.
And you abstain?
No, I'm opposed.
Well, it passes. All right.
Uh, yes, I would like to, um, ask the board to consider, uh, the last day of school is June 21st and it is already a half-day, um, with a, um, early dismissal schedule. I would like to make Thursday, the 20th, also a half-day for professional development for the staff to work on vision and mission, which we've been working on, uh, all throughout the year. But it would be great to have some time before the summer to really, um, put together and get prepared for next year. And I'm asking that we go to the professional development day dismissal time for both days so it's not confusing for parents. I have asked, um, the PTOs, I've asked the principals to talk to the PTOs. No one has had any objected, objection, um, and so that is my request.
Remend the calendar.
Remend the calendar.
So two half-days of record.
So moved.
Second?
Second, Michelle. Any further discussion? If it's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I have two Republican candidates on agenda items.
I understand that we're approaching time, but I just hope that the board would not proposal for, for a new school that has an auditorium that, that, that's less seats than we have now that we have plays and we have activities that, that is overcrowded now and not building a facility with smaller gym. And we're considering building a facility with a pool and a pool that's a big part of the pod. So when it comes forward as a plan of numbers, I think you're going to want to include those things. Even though the state reimbursement isn't going to be there, I think those are things that they do need to have.
All right. All right, thank you. No executive session, if you wish.
Sure.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.